Good evening. The March 27, 2024, regular meeting of the Murrieta Planning Commission is called to order. Would the Secretary call roll for the termination of a quorum, please?
Thank you, Chair. Chair Fisher.
Here.
Vice Chair Harland.
Here.
Commissioner Rummen.
Here.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Here.
Commissioner Lapaglia. Let the record reflect, all Commissioners, except, with the exception of Lapaglia, are here.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and Commissioner Verum will lead us in that pledge.
Please stand and join me as we salute our nation's flag. Hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in a two-republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Verum. We'll now be moving on to the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Seeing none.
Let's call for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Chair Fisher. Oh, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, please do a roll call vote.
Chair Fisher.
Yes?
Vice Chair Harland.
Aye.
Commissioner Rummen.
Aye.
Commissioner Wojcik.
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Public comments. At this time, we will take public comments. Any person may address the Planning Commission on any subject pertaining to city business which does not relate to any item listed on the agenda or the consent calendar tonight. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the Planning Commission on any matter not listed on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and if the speaker would introduce themselves and their address when they approach, I would appreciate it. Madam Secretary, do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Seeing none.
Madam Secretary, we are now moving to the public. Do we have any, any public comments whatsoever?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now going to move on to the public hearing.
Yes, we'll be having Erin Rintamaki present tonight.
Right. Tonight's, tonight's public hearing is Development Plan 2022-2605/2023-00006 with DP 2022-2605/2023-0006, Murrieta Hot Springs at Jefferson Apartments. Are there any members of the Planning Commission that wish to abstain or recuse themselves for this item? Seeing none, we will move on to the staff presentation. Staff, may we have the report?
Yes, you may. Thank you for the introduction, and good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harland, and distinguished members of the Planning Commission. All right, today we'll be discussing a property. The site is highlighted on the map in turquoise, located at the southeast corner of Murrieta Hot Springs Road at Jefferson Avenue intersection. The proposal this evening is a development plan application for an entitlement for the future construction of 387 multifamily units. The project site is bounded by the south side of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and the east side of Jefferson Avenue. The site has a general planned land use designation of community, of commercial, and a zoning designation of community commercial with a transit-oriented development overlay district, which I'll refer to from here on out as TOD. The transit-oriented development district, the TOD, allows multifamily residential when at least 30 dwelling units per acre are provided. Multifamily land uses are permitted within the TOD overlay. The purpose of the TOD overlay is to allow a mixture of residential and non-residential development within proximity to transit to encourage mixed land use for enhanced transit and pedestrian activity. Now for a little bit of background history. The TOD area was created to support the regional housing need allocation by the state. Designating the TOD as a housing-rich area in the regional housing need allocation cycle enabled the city to preserve residential zoning patterns in other areas of the city at their existing density levels. So this slide has two images on it, I want to point out, one on the left and one on the right. We'll be talking about the image on the left first. So, future residents will be able to walk to the adjacent commercial center that is approximately 280 feet away from the project site for services, restaurants, and retail. The RTA bus stop will be within 1,200 feet of the project site. A full-service grocery store, let me turn my mouse on. A full-service grocery store and Walmart are both less than 1/4 mile walking distance from the project site. Here's the full-service grocery store. There's the Walmart and the bus stop. So this, this site meets the TOD's overlays' purpose, as this residential project will be adjacent to commercial development and close to public transit for enhanced transit and pedestrian activity. The development plan proposes constructing 387 multifamily units on an 18-acre parcel. Approximately 13 acres of the site will be developed with a five-acre area containing grasslands and drainage to be avoided. The TOD overlay permits a maximum of 150 feet in height. The project includes 15 three-story, 45 feet in height residential buildings and a two-story, 34 feet in height leasing slash amenity building for 16 buildings total. The project design meets setback and density requirements. Setbacks along Murrieta Hot Springs Road are at 10 feet, and setbacks along Jefferson Avenue are also 10 feet, and the project meets the minimum density of 30 dwelling units per acre. The total parking for the project is 780 spaces, and that's comprised of open stalls, carports, and garages, with 25% for guest parking and 10% being electrical vehicle charging stations. The project has exceeded the minimum parking requirement by one space and has exceeded the minimum electrical vehicle charging stations by 5%. The 15 residential buildings would include units ranging from one to three bedrooms, with 209 one-bedroom units, 155 two-bedroom units, and 23 three-bedroom units, for a total of 387. The project includes only market rate units with no affordable component. This slide depicts the overall areas in green that are proposed as amenities. Several areas are shown as linear courtyards and miscellaneous landscape areas, and I'll just point those out now with the cursor. So, this spot at the corner is a miscellaneous landscape area, same with this. These are the linear courtyards that the applicant is referring to. So onsite amenities include a spa terrace, pool courtyard, an outdoor balcony, a view long, barbecue, fire pit areas, and a dog park. The proposed indoor amenities in leasing and amenity building include a fitness center, club room, game room, coworking space, conference rooms, and private offices. The conceptual landscape plan is designed to buffer and screen the site from public vantage points such as parking areas and buildings while enhancing the architectural design. The project proposes planting and irrigating 427 trees throughout the site. Common area landscaping would be provided throughout the site, as we can see, including the recreation and amenity areas. Water and sewer services will be provided to the project by Western Municipal Water District. Water service for the project will connect to the existing water main in Murrieta Hot Springs Road via an eight-inch water line. Wastewater service for the project would result in an installation of an eight-inch sewer line connecting to the existing Jefferson Avenue sewer main. Murrieta Hot Springs Road will be improved along the project frontage to a half width of 67 feet from center line to the right-of-way and additional width opposite the center line. Improvements to the roadway would include a raised median, interim striping for Murrieta Hot Springs Road along the project frontage. And what, there's, the mouse is being a little tricky, but this is the interim striping that I'm referring to. So, an interim eastbound right turn lane onto the project driveway, which is right here. A five-foot sidewalk along the project frontage, an eight-foot bike lane, and two 11, east, 11-foot eastbound through lanes will be constructed. The interim striping improvements for Murrieta Hot Springs Road will remain in place until the roadway segment shown in the blue box is built out to its ultimate width and connecting to the project's proposed improvements. Starting from the project's easterly property line along Murrieta Hot Springs Road, an interim sidewalk will be, will connect the project site to the existing sidewalk fronting, the adjacent commercial center. So, this is where I show the property line where the project ends, and if we go to this image on top, it's zoomed up. This is the interim sidewalk that connects the project site, carrying them over to the commercial center, which is right here. Capital Improvement Plan lists citywide infrastructure projects for future improvements. This Murrieta Hot Springs Road section will be added to the CIP list in the future and will require a project analysis, including environmental analysis and financial planning to budget. Now let's move on to Jefferson Avenue. So at this section of Jefferson Avenue, there is one right turn pocket and three through lanes traveling north. A second right turn lane is conditioned to be built by the project, and I've attempted to show the general location of that right here. Jefferson Avenue's existing right turn pocket has a 285-foot right turn lane with 25 queuing storage for one vehicle totaling 298 feet. The project is proposing to shorten the existing right turn lane to 218 feet in length and increase the queuing by 74 feet because they're shortening the length. By shortening the existing length of the right turn lane, the project traffic trips and design impact Jefferson, the, the traffic trips and the design impact Jefferson Avenue queuing. Traffic generated by the project will result in an increased queue of 74 feet, which could not be accommodated by a single 218-foot turn lane. An additional 218-foot secondary right turn lane is needed to accommodate the overall queuing of the intersection and the project. Jefferson Avenue's project frontage will be improved to a half width of 55 feet from center line to the right-of-way. An improvement will consist of dual right turn lanes from Jefferson Avenue onto Murrieta Hot Springs Road, a right turn decelerization lane into Project Dr. 1, which is located right here, this is the decelerating. And a parkway with enhanced landscape, which is over here, right along that. A raised median would also be constructed along Jefferson Avenue to prevent left turn movements from project, from the main project entry. So here's the median, no left turn movements will be allowed here. Vehicular access to the project will be provided by constructing a main entry driveway along Jefferson Avenue with left-in and right-out only movements. A median along Jefferson Avenue, which I previously described, will restrict left turn movements from the main entry. An emergency access-only driveway is provided along Jefferson Avenue just south of the main project driveway entry. A secondary access driveway would be constructed along Murrieta Hot Springs Road and restricted to right-in and right-out movements only. The project includes several internal drives with surface parking to navigate the site. Three existing SCE transmission lines along Jefferson Avenue at the subject property's frontage would obstruct the construction of the required second right turn lane and must be relocated due to their high voltage exceeding the limit for undergrounding. The permittee is responsible for this relocation either onsite or across Jefferson Avenue under SCE's guidelines. The project includes internal sidewalks from the buildings and common area amenities connecting to the public sidewalks along Murrieta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson Avenue. The project would improve the pedestrian ramp crosswalk located at the southwesterly corner of Jefferson Avenue and Murrieta Hot Springs Road, this one over here. Public sidewalk improvements will be constructed along all project site frontages with pedestrian access to and from the site on both Murrieta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson Avenue. The proposed sidewalks connect to the neighboring offsite areas. The project architecture is designed using the contemporary Spanish style. The buildings would have varying roof lines, facade articulation, awnings, and enhanced building materials to vary building massing. The property has been evaluated for potential impacts on cultural resources through AB52. Through the implementation of the city's cultural-related general plan mitigation measures, project-specific conditions, and mitigation measures, potential impacts to tribal cultural resources would be less than significant. A jurisdictional water course also bisects the site. The jurisdictional water course will remain undisturbed open space, avoiding any direct This project applies to state laws such as SB 335, requiring cities to streamline the review and approval of qualifying housing projects, and SB 330, streamlining the entitlement process by requiring cities to reduce the time and expense necessary to process permits for housing. The city is required by state law to bring housing projects forward for prompt decision, consideration by decision-makers, and we are limited to a total of five hearings for any one project. So a mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project under CEQA. An errata has been presented to you this evening regarding condition of approval number 88. This is a engineering condition that's meant to clarify street improvements, and I will ask Rick Elzaga, our senior engineer, to briefly describe the changes made on the errata.
Good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harland, and esteemed Commissioners Rummen and Wojcik. So the improvements, the addition, Erin, do you have a, a plan view of the Hot Springs Yeah, there we go. So, so the bottom half of the image there, so you can see the chevrons, that is temporary striping. The entire roadway will be paved, and curb-to-curb will be at their ultimate location. So right now, the existing curb on the, on the top side, that curb, although that site on the top side is undeveloped, the curb is in its existing ultimate location. So, we have a current project on that side, but even if it doesn't move forward, the, the project in question will widen and put the curb at its ultimate location. So physically, the road width will be there, but because of a choke point that we have existing because of the drainage channel on the, to the right of, just on the easterly property line, that becomes a physical choke point, and so we have to maintain two lanes eastbound versus the ultimate three lanes eastbound. And as a result, we have this interim striping. So, that's been conditioned, and that's fine. The errata is to add a raised concrete berm. So, the outline of the chevron is where the curb will go. Actually, technically, it will begin on Jefferson, where the curb return is, and, and so that curb that's on Jefferson will, will move forward and then wrap around on that line where the arrow is, and continue, and basically follow and go there, and then continue again all the way to the easterly property line, and it'll be a white concrete curb for visual discernment from the gray pavement. So when vehicles do turn from the southbound Jefferson to eastbound Hot Springs, so that gray on gray doesn't get a kind of camouflaged, and, and we also have a physical barriers to, to prevent people from driving over the chevrons and then doing things that they're not supposed to, whatever those may be. So that is the errata, that is the language in, in that condition, for that reason.
Thank you for the explanation, Rick. All right, that, that brings us to our recommendation this evening, and that would be three parts. To consider and approve the notice of determination and adopt the mitigated negative declaration pursuant to CEQA guidelines. Number two, adopt the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Murrieta, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and approving Development Plan Permit 2022-2605 for construction of 387 multifamily units and associated amenities and improvements located southeast of intersection of Murrieta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson Avenue, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A, as found in Attachment 1, and errata to condition of approval 88. That concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's very much appreciated, and at this time, we're going to take questions from the commission members to the staff, and tonight we'll start off with Mr. Wojcik. Commissioner Wojcik?
Thank you. Thank you, Erin, for that presentation. In the, in the school section of the report, it talked about how there could be a low number of about 180 students being added to our school district upwards to just, I think, over 700 students from this particular project, which, I, I, it's, it's such a broad range, and I looked at the ratio, and the ratios were broad, and I don't know if that's, we have enough apartment projects, so I didn't know if we can tighten those numbers down in the future, or if they're always going to be such a broad spectrum, you know, based on historically what other apartments have brought in student-wise. But, be that as it may, there's going to be a number of kids in this project, and I didn't see anything about a park in this project for, for these kids, and I don't, I believe the closest one would be downtown, I believe, quite, quite a distance. Were there any conversations or discussions about one of the amenities being an outdoor I see there's a dog park, but I wouldn't want my kid playing in the dog park, of
When an applicant proposes a multifamily project similar to what we're looking at tonight, they have a menu of options to provide in order to meet the amenities requirement. There isn't any singular requirement that must be applied to every multifamily project, rather it's a menu that the applicant or developer can choose from that might best fit the market type of people that they are seeking to serve in this development, so...
So, so there was no discussion, it was, there, these are the amenities they wanted, and that was it? Is that a fair statement?
Hi, Commissioner, as Erin describes, there's a list of different amenities that you can provide or propose as an applicant. One thing that we do want is pools, so that was one thing, you know, with our hot summers, we want to make sure that kids have that local recreation. The applicant, when they present and do Q and A, they, we can see if they would be amenable to providing additional amenities or replacing these amenities with children-centric uses, but maybe to go back to your question is that the applicant would be paying fees directly to our Community Services Department. Those fees ultimately go to helping with our existing parks and also to plan and program future parks. I know one discussion point is that they are looking for additional lands in the area to purchase and then promote as a new public park. So those are some things that we're looking on the side, but the way that state law is structured, they would pay fees, and those fees for the local jurisdiction, we would then pursue additional options offsite.
Okay, thank you for that. I'll be a question I'll ask the applicant. Erin, can you go to the slide that showed the, the entrances to the project? It was the overhead from both Jefferson and Murrieta Hot Springs Road? Yeah, I think, yeah, that's it. There is, in the traffic report, there was a, on Jefferson Avenue, it said that it received an F, a letter grade F, and it said Jefferson Avenue and driveway. Is that the main entry? Is that what we mean by driveway?
I'm gonna, we have Ida Egerton, our traffic engine here, here this evening, and she'll be answering that question, but I'm going to switch to a different slide that might be more helpful for her to explain.
So yes, so the level of service that was reported was the southbound left, left turn pocket into the project entry. So it was just a single movement that was operating at a level of service F. However, when you look at the intersection, the entire intersection of that driveway, it's operating at a level of service A as an overall. It's just that what was reported, because it's an unsignaled intersection, was just the one left turn pocket level of service. But with the lengthening of the, with the queuing that was studied, the, if they provided 175 feet of left turn pocket, which is what they will provide, that will improve that level of service as well, so it does not impact it as, as an overall intersection. It's just a left turn, one movement is what was reported.
Okay, so when it says Jefferson Avenue at Project Dr. 1, level of service F, we're talking about the left-hand turn?
Just the left hand, yep. Because it's an unsignaled intersection, it was reported by the Just the left hand, yep. Because it's an unsignalized intersection, it was reported by the movement rather than as a whole intersection. But when you look at the results for the overall intersection, it operates as a level of service much better than a low SF.
So if I'm a resident of that project, when I leave that driveway on Jefferson, it'll be a right turn only, but I can turn, if I'm on Jefferson heading south, I'll be able to turn left into that driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And obviously, if I'm heading north on Jefferson, I'll be able to make a right hand turn into that driveway?
A right, yes.
Okay. Okay, and the the pro, the pro, the current lane to turn right onto Murrieta Hot Springs Road is 218 feet. I'm sorry, 285 feet, we're shortening it to 218 is I I guess my question is, shouldn't we, that's such a busy intersection, it's going to get worse, especially when it punches through. Isn't there, wouldn't we want to keep it at 285 feet?
But that the 285 feet is at a single lane, so the 218 will not be sufficient as a single lane. That is why the project would be adding a second right turn lane. So now it's two right turn lanes at 218 feet, which means it's about 436 feet together. So if it was just a single lane, it wouldn't be sufficient, but now it would be two.
Right, but I guess when I was, my question, maybe I I misspoke. My question should have been, even though it's going to two lanes, shouldn't we still keep it at 285 feet?
Because the project driveway will be, it it won't accommodate 285 feet. The project driveway would be in conflict if we kept it at 285. As you can see, the currently where that red at 285, the arrow is showing, that's the current storage for the right turn pocket. However, when the Murrieta Hot Springs Road gets widened, that's why physically it's shortening to 218.
So when I'm looking at that 285 foot arrow, you're saying the driveway is somewhere to the east of that arrow?
Yes, can you show where the driveway is? Yes, so if we if we shifted where the where the proposed right lane is to if you extended to 285 feet, that driveway will be in conflict.
Okay. So I shouldn't be looking at the length of the arrow for the length of the driveway?
That was just to show the 285 currently where it's at today and then where the proposed 218 is.
But if I look at the current where the 285 foot driveway is today, it's not where the driveway is?
No, but I guess.
Maybe I'm not following.
So the that where Aaron is pointing, that's where the intersection starts today.
Right.
But when it's proposed, it's shifted back to where that Aaron is pointing.
I see, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So if you dimension 285 feet from the proposed, all the way back, then with the transitions, the driveway would be in conflict.
Do you know what the 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 longest length we can go with that would not impede the driveway?
I believe that's where the 218 came from.
Can't go longer than that?
I'm sorry?
We can't go longer than 218?
Not with the transitions that are required. There's there's a minimum requirement for the a right turn pocket transition. So that 218 is the farthest they can go. And that's why where when you add a second right turn lane, that would accommodate the queuing.
Okay. Let's take a look at the secondary access on Murrieta Hot Springs Road. So that entry, if I understand, leaving the project's right turn only and coming into the project off of Murrieta Hot Springs Road would also be a right turn only? There won't be a left hand turn there?
No, a left hand, right in, right out.
So if I'm a resident there and I need to get to Jefferson to go southbound, I'm going to have to go onto Murrieta Hot Springs Road and flip a U-turn somewhere. Is that accurate?
Alternatively, they can use the Jefferson exit if they want to go northbound on Jefferson.
But they can't go south?
They can make a U-turn at Murrieta Hot Springs Road.
Okay.
So if they exit off of Jefferson, they are able to make a U-turn.
Okay. So there was a comment in the report that the JPI Development, they're going to put up a traffic light on Murrieta Hot Springs Road for ingress and egress to their project. As I look at that secondary access, where is this stoplight going to be? Is it going to be east or west of it?
East of it.
East of it? Okay. And I know there is, it looked like there is some discussions with staff to try to align the driveways for both projects, so they're directly across from one another. By doing so, it would avoid some U-turns, correct?
Correct.
And it would probably make it easier to access Jefferson from the project. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And it'd also make it easier to access the project from Murrieta Hot Springs Road because they'll be able to make a left hand turn at that stoplight as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a lot of common sense there why it should be that way. And yet, the applicant doesn't want to do that. And so my question to staff is, why did they not want to do that?
Commissioner through the chair, I think that's a question best answered by the applicant themselves tonight. But I I would say it was a comment in our first cycle letter that they should coordinate. We did try to get those partners to communicate. That did not come to fruition, unfortunately. I I would end that we don't know that there's a standard to rely upon, to require them to orient their driveway to match the offsite driveway. And so we have looked very deep to see what our options are, but I'm not sure that we can, unless the applicant would change their design, I'm not sure that there's a standard that staff could enforce on behalf of the Planning Commission for that intersection.
And and I'm looking at purely as kind of a safety traffic issue, that there's fewer U-turns that would need to be made. And we know how problematic U-turns can be. But also, the the, I'd I'd imagine it would actually for length of service would probably help improve that. Is that an accurate statement or inaccurate?
It's accurate. It would have, if currently the left turn, southbound left from Jefferson, those, that traffic would have helped if more people were to utilize the signalized intersection on Murrieta Hot Springs Road.
Okay, that's what I thought. I have another question for the applicant then. I don't have any more questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Rummen?
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Another great presentation. Appreciate it. I do also have that same question of the applicant, so I hope they're ready to present as to why they wouldn't want to align the driveways. I do, alternatively, let me ask you this, because the, it's a right turn only, but can the city or would you, have you thought about requiring an acceleration lane as you leave that driveway? And and where I'm going with that, if you look at the, where the driveway is right here, there possibly, yes, there's a possibility that somebody could, yeah, right turn only, but traverse three, four lanes and try and dart over to the left turn lane right there, albeit legally or illegally right there to try and dart across depending on how many cars are stacked in that left turn lane at that new signal right there, right where your arrow is, that left turn lane, right where the signal is. Somebody could could basically decide to traverse those lanes and causing a traffic hazard, you know, especially as that street gets busier. And again, it does defy common sense not to align the driveways. So to combat some type of traffic situation, leaving that secondary driveway, could we create a right turn pocket, if you will, acceleration lane that would take you to the intersection and not allow you or not allow somebody to cut across all those lanes? You understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, to have an acceleration lane, there is not enough distance between the driveway to the signalized intersection to have a
As designed?
As designed.
As designed, and that's where I'm going with it. But if it was redesigned to accommodate that, could we redesign that to require an acceleration lane?
I believe it's not going to, so the JPI project where that driveway is, if they keep going east to accommodate the acceleration lane, I think it's going to take it even much longer to, and with the with the riprap and and I guess that, what is that? The drainage channel, yeah, I'm sorry. There's not going to be enough distance to have an acceleration lane before they reach they reach that culvert. So right now, the idea is that any left turners would exit the Jefferson driveway and make a U-turn at Murrieta Hot Springs Road intersection at the signal, not necessarily coming out of this driveway to make a U-turn at the JPI's signal. So the idea is to make this a U-turn at for the going northbound and making a U-turn to go southbound.
Well, ideally, that's what they should do. I just know my 30-plus years as a police officer that, you know, when when people have an opportunity to drive a certain way, they will take advantage of it if they think that that's going to be the most efficient way. So in order to kind of think ahead, if you will, I realize that, I don't know, maybe need more time to think of other options if they're, the applicant's not willing to align the driveways. But leaving, what, well, let me ask you, what's the distance between that secondary driveway exit and the start of the intersection there? What's the, where the sidewalk is? What's the, how many feet is that?
I don't actually have that.
So where I'm going with this is that would, could the acceleration lane, if you will, encompass whatever that distance is? So that way, when they leave the driveway for that short period of time right there, would would allow for the acceleration, but also at the at the same time, prevent someone from darting across three lanes of traffic. It would, it would make them continue eastbound, you know, and they could go up to Madison or whatever and go around the block the long way.
I mean, the only thing that could help is if there is a temporary berm right, right when they come out, like a pork chop to prevent them
That's where I'm going with this, is that if if we can't move, if we can't pre, if they're unwilling to align the driveways, I'm just looking at it from a traffic safety standpoint and preventing accidents, stop traffic, those type of things like that. If if there's a, if there's something that we could do as a commission, maybe to 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 warrant that option and prevent an accident or something in the in the future.
That could be taken a look at. I mean, but yeah, there's some sort of a berm or, you know, to force people to make a right only and not make a left.
Without taking up lanes of traffic and and cutting into, you know, I I'm talking about maybe taking another portion of the easement and and moving it inward in order to accommodate that.
That could be something to be looked at.
Just throwing out options because this is the one, this is the one sticking point I'm absolutely not happy about with this, with this project. And it's not because of, you're trying to work the best here. And that one comment on page 14 where the applicant was unwilling to to work with staff essentially in the JPI. And so we'll find out more about that. I'm just throwing out other options. When it comes to the movement of the Edison poles, is that something? Of course, that's dependent on when Edison can construct the work and and everything. Can the city condition the project to, until those movement of those poles are are happen, that that no COA could be issued until that happens? So that would force the road improvements, force the movement of the poles, force the road improvements before the project could be completed?
Commissioner Rummen, so the way the conditions are written are that the poles shall be completed, the relocation is completed prior to first occupancy. And that goes with all improvements. So they have that time from the, from the day we issue the permit up until they want to occupy one of those apartments. They have that entire timeframe to complete that.
So so if it's not done, because they're waiting on Edison, it sits for maybe months at a time or or whatever, nobody could move into the apartments and
That's the way the condition is written, and they know this condition today, so they can start today. And I mean, it's it's months, as we know, from the project of the size to if they were, if we were to issue the permit tomorrow to when it, a structure can actually be occupied. We know generally it's months and months, whatever the actual timeline is, we don't know. But they can, they've known this for some time now, so presumably they've they've initiated it. But we understand the concern, we've had these discussions with them. But but this is the way the conditions are written, and not only that, the turn lane is also dependent on the relocation of those poles.
Okay, that that's good. So explain the reason for the chevrons or those, the, when the curb line gets moved back, I was under the understanding that that was based upon the movement of the poles, and that was going to be a temporary because of the poles. So that way, is this as it's being constructed or why why the use of the chevrons and that extra space right there in the, if if the project can't be occupied until the the actual movement of the poles and the widening of the street?
Both. So the way the conditions are written is all improvements shall be completed. So everything within the public right of way shall be completed prior to first occupancy. Now, the reason for the chevrons was before the errata of the white berm. So the chevrons were, it was going to be striped white, and so that visual of stay out of this area, stay in these lanes. But as we thought more through this, the physical berm to keep the the vehicles going eastbound on Hot Springs, to keep them in line, and also to prevent, for example, northbound Jefferson, if you make a right turn and say, you know what, I'm going to go into that secondary driveway. I want to go in real quick, I forgot something, to prevent those types of movements as well, to keep them in their lane. So physically, the berm will provide that guidance for both the northbound Jefferson onto Hot Springs as well as the the southbound Jefferson traffic onto Hot Springs.
Okay. Also, of course, I bring this up in every apartment complex project, but security gates. Does this project have security gates?
Gates are not proposed for this project site. It was not part of their design.
Is that something that we as a commission could require as a condition of approval?
Gates do have a standard that you can relate it to. Given the Housing Accountability Act, I'd want to be careful tonight. We may want to confer that question to our city attorney. In in the past, I've said yes to that question. I want to be extra cautious this evening. Gates can also be used for fire department and police department purposes. So I agree, there could be a safety nexus, but when it comes to the Housing Accountability Act, I want to be extra cautious there. So forgive me, but I may have to pose that question back to our city attorney.
I'm not aware of any standard that the city has requiring gates, and I don't believe that that was ever brought up in any of the cycles and reviews. So I think it would be something that would be very difficult to, this is a hot mic, difficult to impossible to impose now from the from the dais.
But maybe a future code amendment or something?
Something we can certainly look at and consider. We have to figure out what the criteria would be and what the standards would be. But yeah, if the commission would like to schedule a study session or something and have staff research that, we can look into that and see if that's something we want to discuss.
Okay, thank you. Elevators. Does this project have elevators on their buildings?
Elevators are not proposed.
Any, any reason why not, or could we, or is that an option, or is that another?
I believe the only nexus to an elevator is when you have a four-story or higher, I think that with ADA and other regulations, three-story and lower are not required per state law to have elevators, I think it's more of a opportunity for the types of guests that would stay, or the types of residents that would stay at that facility.
All right, uh, that's all the questions I have of staff right now, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Verum. Vice Chair Harlan?
Thank you, Aaron, the, just recently here, we were handed a few uh public comments that came across, um, concerns, just looking through them here, kind of scanning through density, traffic, quality of life, infrastructure, are these shared with city council as well? Or, or I guess will they be?
So we're before the planning commission tonight, uh, these comments would be provided to the commission uh if upon appeal, per se, if we found ourselves in front of city council, uh, I believe we would take this as part of the package uh in the staff report to the next hearing body, uh, but we generally don't share these separately with another hearing body, because your commission has the authority on this permit type, and so we'd limit it to that. Um, if folks sent it on their own accord to other hearing bodies, that would be different, but we channel those as we get them from city clerk to your office, if you will.
Thank you, do we, it looks like the feedback we have were from residents, did we hear from any businesses by any chance? Cause there's certainly gonna be an impact there as well.
Some of the um public comment could be from business owners, they didn't identify themselves, but I would agree, it seems like it was mostly uh local residents, and we did not hear from any business owners.
Got it, so for the scope or the lens, the responsibility of the commission, right, is this project consistent with general plan, zoning, SEQA, et cetera? We didn't receive any public comments specific to those areas, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you, so looking at the planning commission resolution document, so it says, Marietta Municipal Code Section sixteen references multifamily residential and mixed-use development of at least thirty dwelling units per acre uh are allowed. The proposal is for three hundred and eighty-seven units, where we state that this project will meet the thirty dwelling units per acre. Approximately how many units per acre will this project be?
It's, it said thirty dwelling units per acre.
Oh, it, it, so it's thirty to thirty, okay. Shifting over to uh section one and two, and I wanna compliment you on the reporting, the specifics and the details, a lot of um a lot of backing uh details here, so much appreciated, but looking at section one there, right, under facts, the proposed development plan uh permit is consistent with the Marietta Development Code, zoning and general plan and SEQA. Listed uh under general plan goal land use one, in section one, and it's also listed in section two, there's a reference. So general plan goal land use one, balance the land use throughout the community, meeting the needs of existing residents and businesses, as well as anticipated growth, and achieves the community vision. So if I compare one versus two, one shares, provide multifamily housing, road and sewer, sidewalks, pedestrians, complimentary retail office and commercial, and then a line saying that this is consistent with assumptions made by the general plan. Right, and section two, it lists providing three hundred and eighty-seven units of new housing, and then verbiage as project is consistent with the general plan designation. So my question is, when you reference community vision, are you tying to and referencing the community vision to the general plan? Is it, tha- that's a consistency I see where you're referring to these as facts?
Yes, so what's being referred to is, yes, this is a commercial zone, and it is appropriate for commercial-type uses. However, a transit-oriented development district overlay was placed upon this property and some neighboring ones for transit reasons and to be closer to commercial uh uses. So that is why, even though this is a residential project on a commercial site, it is still consistent with the general plan.
Right, but it, got that, just as you refer to community vision, that's, you're saying the vision is within the plan?
Yes.
Okay, so, so to that point, and maybe it's a legal question, those two sentences, consistent with assumptions made by, and as project is consistent with designation, perhaps those two sentences need to be the same? But I'll defer to you guys, ju- just an observation in reading those. Does that make sense?
Are you asking for the legal advice?
Either or, yeah.
I mean, I, I, we can take a look at that section and make sure it's phrased correctly in the future, I don't have that section in front of me, right, I'm trying, trying to download it right now, it's really slow. So it's hard to rewrite it here.
Then just two other things while you're looking at that, um, we referenced this as being a market rate project, can that be changed at any time to affordable or low income? Can that designation be, be altered, or there's a process if, I guess that's my question, market rate means it will stay market rate?
No, that does not mean it has to stay market rate, but the permittee designed the, the project site as it is to um financially pencil as a market rate project. I think it would be highly unlikely, but not impossible, for someone else to come in and redesign the site uh as an affordable project. If changes were made, that would have to be brought back to uh the planning commission.
Okay, then last, um, the architecture proposed, assume that's consistent with design standards in place now?
It's, it's consistent with the development code standards, and um, we recently had the multifamily design standards instituted, but this project was in before those uh came into effect. But nonetheless, they are very similar in design standards and meet the requirements.
Got it, okay.
Uh, Commissioner Harlan, just to touch upon one question you asked about the commenters and their letters, uh, if they touch upon any SEQA issues, I think there was a theme from the commenters uh this afternoon, evening, that would there be a cumulative traffic impact from these projects? Because they're identifying the close proximity of one multifamily versus another, I would like to say that uh Ida on our team did provide a cumulative list, meaning a more current list of projects that the projects traffic engineer would have to analyze. That was done for JPI to the north, and that was done for this project, so to answer your question, uh, the SEQA documents before you this evening did include cumulative review for those other projects that are very recent, that were permitted under construction or moving forward in another manner, so I just wanted to address that, that I saw some very astute comments from the public this evening, and I just wanted to challenge that, I think the SEQA document embraces their concerns.
I appreciate you.
Did not find any new impacts.
I appreciate you sharing that, Jared, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Did you have an answer?
No, I'm still a little stuck on exactly what it is you're looking for, uh, is it the word vision that's, you're having issue with, or try?
Just where it's, where we talk about achieving the, the community vision.
Section are you on first, let's make sure we're looking at the same paragraph.
Uh, section one.
Uh-huh.
And section two. Where it talks, you know, we list something as a fact, and then we back up why it's the fact, and as we talk about this meeting the, the vision, down below, it's, you know, both of them reference the general plan, so my assumption was the general plan is the vision.
Correct.
And then you've got two different sentences tying back to the general plan, that was just an observation that I saw.
I think that's a correct observation, but I'm not sure what the issue with that is.
And if there's no issue with the sentence?
Yeah, because the general plan is meant to uh be the city's vision, so um, referencing that it is a, a project or a plan or a zone or whatever it is that we're talking about in this particular case, is consistent with the city's general plan would be that it's consistent with the city's vision, it's the same. That's the way the general plan is written in that language as well.
Which is, which is the assumption I had, it's just there's two sentences there, one says consistent with assumptions made by the general plan, and then we go to section two, and we say as the project is consistent with general plan designations. Just, it, it was just an observation, do those two sentences wanna be the same, cause we're saying the same thing, that's all. Can you point out where the um, that first sentence?
Yeah.
The first sentence in the section?
One, what paragraph? Just trying to see the exact ones. Yeah, I don't think it's inconsistent, but, you know, we, we, we can certainly make sure, and we'll certainly double-check for uh any, any future ones as well. Vice Chair, I might offer that, wh- when the, when city council originally envisioned the, the TOD area, that was a plan, that was an assumption, today is the project that's implementing that vision, if you will, hopefully those, I think that's why those two sentences are matching together.
Anything else, Vice Chair Harlan?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
All right. We'll get back to that, I guess. Let me. I'm not sure that if you go back to the two gates, the in and out, the access. I'm not so sure that a project of this nature can only handle two ingress and egress openings. What happens if there is an emergency and people have to flee this project? One, a secondary entry only is a right turn, the main entry is a right and left turn. In the main entry, is there gonna be a traffic signal at that area? Or are people just gonna queue into a left-turn lane to get into that project with the traffic flow that is on Jefferson? That could be difficult.
There won't be a signalized uh light at the main entry for people turning left.
So it'll just be a queue lane?
It'll be a queue lane, that's been lengthened.
That's been lengthened, but across three lanes of traffic coming on Jefferson from the south to the north?
Correct.
And the secondary entry, I kind of agree with the other commissioners, is why can't that be, be in line with the other projects so that we don't have confusions uh by having an entryway down from another area that's gonna be signalized, is that gonna be signalized?
The secondary access also will not be signalized, no.
No, but down further to the right.
Yes.
That's a signalized.
If, if this project to the north, JPI, if it is built, there will be a traffic signal here, yes.
If it's built, so right now, if this project were to be developed within the next week or so, there would only be that right turn exit.
Correct.
Has there been any uh discussion between the developer or the applicant and the, the planning commission regarding the entrances? Not enough? Wrong places?
Uh, Chair, um, I, I think that would be a question best suited for the applicant, uh, when they come up for their presentation and rebuttal. Um, but at the staff level, we did make that as a comment in our initial letter, uh, we did the best we could to pair up the JPI applicant with the applicant tonight. Uh, unfortunately, um, we weren't able to get traction on that request, but uh, staff found that to be a very important design attribute, and we were hopeful that the applicant would um do more further work on that one, but uh, unfortunately, that's all we can present to you tonight.
I'm just concerned about that two hundred and eighteen lane versus uh the other lane. We've had a problem on Jefferson for a long period of time, and we finally put in that right turn lane, uh, and now we're putting in another lane but shorter because of the exit and entrance egress to this project. Is that a sound fundamental decision?
So we looked at the entry point where the main dri- entry drive is today, and we did ask them to move it uh also in our first letter. Nonetheless, they maintained the entry drive where it is now, it is, we are seeing a reduction from two hundred eighty-five to two hundred eighteen. The concern with the reduction has to do with queuing, there would be people that are lingering outside the actual dedicated lane, so there was a concern about queuing, which is why Traffic and Engineering came to a conclusion that we could go with a two hundred eighteen-foot turn lane, but there would have to be two of them in order to accommodate the queuing and not have an impact.
I guess I'm so concerned about that main entrance having a queue of left turns and then right turns, and a shorter distance from a right turn only because of that entrance. Um, I, I'm not comfortable with it, uh, just personally, but, but I guess we'd have to ask the applicant, and then I guess I'm under the impression that possibly the planning department and the applicant may not be in um in line with some of these things that have been asked about. Is that a fair statement, or is that a wrong statement?
That's fair, you know, s- at the staff level, we look for opportunities that sometimes are beyond the standards. Um, we look for those to implement for the project, I think from the applicant's perspective, they were just looking at the minimal standards to implement, so um, on other projects, I think we've gotten much, much farther, because there's been a more common theme on finding something that would work for the overall city, but on this one, I think with housing law, um, it's very difficult for staff to ask for things like that, that we used to be able to readily get in the past, and I, I do apologize, cause in the last ten years, I've seen my, my my profession just take a tank and not be able to ask for much, but, but I hear your frustration, Chair. Um, these are things that from a common practical point of view, we try to ask for, but in these days, if it's not a standard, you don't get it, and so I just lend you with that.
So what you're saying to me is this development is in compliance with all the standards that are required?
From our review, correct.
Okay. What about water? What about the availability of water, and who is the water agency for this project?
The water agency for this project is Western Municipal Water District. They, they will provide both water and sewer service to this project, there was a um water and sewer service availability form completed by the applicant, submitted to Western Municipal Water District. They are aware that the project is coming and will be able to provide both water and sewer service to accommodate the site.
And Michael, I, I think when I read the, the theme in the letters, they're wondering where is this water gonna come from?
Right.
Right?
Right.
And so we've lived in California to know that we sometimes have droughts, and sometimes we have wet years. It's the California Water Authority and all of the water agencies that tell us if there's gonna be water or not. The applicant has provided a water service form, they will go through an annexation process with Western Municipal Water District, but um, as it says today, uh, water districts are telling us that they can provide additional uh building. It, it's not long ago, I think back in, what, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we saw Rainbow Municipal Water District and Fallbrook Public District, they froze their um new meters, so there are times uh where, you know, water districts don't have the ability to provide more demand. Um, our districts have shown that if they comply with the annexation requirements and the fee structure, that they would be able to uh um achieve uh not only water, but the minimum water pressure that we need, need for their facilities. So I, I lend that back to you, that uh for today's purposes, um, none of our water districts have told us that there's not enough water, but I think that is a theme, because in the future, we're gonna see that come back, and, and as Californians, I think we're, we're always concerned about where the water's coming from. I think that's a very important question, but we follow the lead of the California Water Authority and the local districts.
And I might, I might be misspoken, but I know that in the past years, we've talked about this area. we've talked about this area not being developed because there was not enough water availability in that area.
And that's why probably you're seeing larger projects because they have the capital to bring those improvements to the site. When you're looking at smaller business models, they don't have the capital to bring that expense here. But I think you're seeing larger multifamily having the ability to pay for that expense and bring those water lines, which ultimately could help with other neighboring properties. But I lend that, it's the size of the project that I think helps cover the costs of the infrastructure.
So the tenants would have enough pressure and availability of water for this project?
Yes, there would, there would be enough pressure, and there's a condition of approval that if tenants experience pressure issues, they are to contact the local tenant's manager's office to explore ways of how to correct those issues with Western Municipal Water District. But there isn't a problem with delivery of water or the pressure.
My next concern is a project of this nature, 387 apartments. And if I recall hearing right, they're within one space of the parking requirement for this project, right? Wrong.
Yeah, yeah, so they, they've met the minimum parking requirements and provided one additional space beyond that.
And we know in apartment complexes around the city, sometimes there isn't enough parking in there and they park on the streets. Where would the overflow park in this particular case, in this particular project? I don't see an area where they could be parking on a street anywhere.
That would be a violation of the property manager's responsibility to make sure that all tenants park on site. If we find that people are parking offsite, that's going to be a major issue between the city and the property manager running that facility. It's a key issue, though, we want to make sure that that would never happen.
It's a key issue for me because as these projects are being built, and they are being built, this one being built at market rate, there's a lot of tendency to have an occupancy more than the typical occupancy that we would see in apartments just because of cost factors. So I'm a little bit concerned about the parking in this area with just one additional parking space over the requirement.
So I would like to add, add to, clarify my, my comment about the one extra parking spot. I don't dispute your observations about existing multifamily sites and parking overflow. I don't dispute that. But I would like to point out that this project, unlike other projects that you might have seen recently come to before you, this project complies with the city's multifamily parking requirement, where we have X amount of parking per unit based on the number of bedrooms. We have a 25% total guest parking requirement on top of that. So other projects that you've seen in the past, mainly that ask for concessions and incentives, they like to use the state minimum parking requirement, which is far less than what we're seeing today. This project meets the City of Marietta's minimum parking standards. So while I respect your observation, this, this project does meet our local city parking standards, which require them to park all vehicles on the project site.
Okay. Let's go to the traffic study. When was the traffic study done? I meant, this area, Marietta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson, is quite a heavily trafficked area. When was that study done and has it taken into consideration all the new development on Jefferson?
So the latest traffic study was completed in May of last year, 2023. Up until that point, every cumulative project that was in the area was included in that project, and the traffic study was approved shortly after that latest traffic study. So last summer, June, was when it was approved.
Are we, as a city, comfortable with a traffic study that's almost a year old? With all the development that's been new in the city? Especially in apartments and, and different projects that have created a lot of residents?
There were about 30 cumulative projects that were part of that traffic study. Up until that May, the final traffic, traffic study was completed. Projects that came since then, I am not aware of projects that are that large that are, such as the JPI project that has come online since this project study has been approved.
And Chair, I would say that because of the rising interest rates and the softening economy, we just haven't seen the record number of multifamily submittals. We don't have anything really active in this area any longer. I think you've seen a lot of projects come before this hearing body, but we're seeing a lull in the multifamily activity versus a year ago when we had a quite buoyant. 2022 and 2023 was when we saw quite a few multifamily, and temporarily, I think that's dried up. So that's why you're seeing a document that might be a year old still communicate to the cumulative projects that we have in-house today.
We feel comfortable with that, that traffic study? Even with this large of a project and the projects down the road and the project down the further road?
In working with our professional traffic engineers, I am comfortable with their review. I've also reviewed it. Things aren't picture perfect because we can only ask for standards, but when it comes to meeting the letter of the law, which has changed a lot in the last few years in the state, but yeah, I'm comfortable with what I've read.
Okay. All the sidewalks and the movement of the poles and the road improvements have got to be done before any occupancy is allowed on this project, is that correct? Did I hear that right?
Yeah, frontage improvements, pole relocation, yeah, those are all required prior to the first occupancy of the first unit for a resident.
Okay. Do we have a sequence of build-out on this project? How it would be built out, is there a sequence study that's been done or something of that sort?
So this project is proposed to be done in one phase.
One phase?
Yes.
Okay. I guess that's all the question I'd have for the city at this time.
Chair, before we move on, if I might try to address Commissioner Harland's concern from earlier before we move on?
Sure.
In looking at the, at the resolution and the general plan, if, okay, so these are the sections that you're talking about. I think these are the same ones we were just looking at, yeah. So the first one under, below the facts where it says general plan goal LU1, and then has a sentence that follows it, that is a verbatim recital of the actual general plan goal from the general plan. Verbatim, word for word.
Right.
The other, the, the second one that you mentioned, which comes at the end of the paragraph, is a conclusion by staff for you to adopt the conclusion that this project is also is consistent with that goal. So the wording is the same in that it uses that, that vision language. Is that, does that address what, what you're?
I, I get that part, just where the supporting piece is there, and you can see where I have it underlined. One says, based on assumptions, and the others, the other is a little more definitive. It was just something I caught as I was reading that, you know, is that, do they need to be the same? Are they good as they are? I, I mean, I, I get the spirit of what it's doing, the fact that they're late, you know, the verbiage is different. That was just a question if those needed to be the same.
Yeah, I think staff is, is just articulating in the, in the first case, consistent with the assumption, the subject site will, comedy. They're just describing the, the facts on the ground, whereas that final one is the conclusion that it, the project is consistent. So, but I'll certainly can sit down with staff and see if we can wordsmith this in, in the future. But I, I think it's, it's still consistent and viable with the general plan and with its intent in there.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. The second thing I just want to remind the commission of is that this, as a housing project coming before us in, in conformance of the Housing Accountability Act, unfortunately, the, the state has tied our hand in a lot of these areas. In the last five, six years, there's been over 100 bills that have been passed by the state tying local entities' hands on what they can, how much discretion they have on projects like this. And I think from a staff perspective, certainly from my perspective, also as a resident of the city, everything that's been discussed so far, and I'm sure we're going to hear more because we haven't even opened public testimony yet, could be better on this site. The problem that we have is where state law has tied our hands, and, and if they meet those certain objective standards, even if they're minimum standards, if they meet them, we don't have the discretion to require them to go above and beyond on those. So I just want to remind the commission of that and keep that in mind as we continue to move forward.
Thank you. Appreciate the reminder. At this time, we'll take testimony from the applicant. If the applicant would walk to the podium and please state your name and who we represent, I would appreciate it.
Multi. We're good. Good? There we go. Good evening, Dan Ferguson, I'm with Cortera Multifamily. We are the applicant and property owner for this project.
Dan, I just wanted to let you know that you're limited to a 15-minute presentation and then a 10-minute rebuttal should you require it.
Okay, great, I'll try to keep the, the presentation piece short. I know there's a lot of questions, particularly around traffic and access into the site, so I'll just jump into this. Like to thank staff again for working with our design and engineering team to get to where we're at today. And I know there's been a lot of questions and concerns, hopefully I can address most of those this evening. But just want to reiterate, and you'll probably hear this a few times from me, that as the property owner and applicant, we're really excited and to be here tonight and to present this opportunity and ultimately to move forward with construction of, of the multifamily project. If you could go to the next slide. So I thought it might be fitting just to start with, who is Cortera? Because most people aren't, aren't really familiar with what a Cortera is. And so we're the wholly owned subsidiary of Lennar, which has invested a lot over the years in, in Marietta. So, see heads nodding, so Cortera is the multifamily apartment group. As you can see on the slide, I won't go through all of this, but founded in 2011, 17 communities that, that we've completed to date, and that ranges everywhere from, you know, three-story garden-style communities, such as what we've presented here, to urban high-rises, mixed-use communities, every, everything in between. Thank you. So we're a developer, we're an in-house contractor, we're a long-term property manager, most of our communities, we, we build and hold long-term, and we have an in-house property management group, which, you know, heard the concerns earlier on, on parking and how we manage that. So these are things that, you know, we deal with day in and day out, and I can get into more of the specifics if, if requested. In terms of the site plan, really our approach here was what I'll call impact avoidance, and, you know, this is kind of our design mantra, and so, you know, some of the challenges that you identified, I mean, these are things that we frankly challenged our, our experts and traffic engineers as well as we put this, this community together. Again, as a, as a long-term property owner, it's, it's not our goal or objective to open a community that has significant queuing, has major traffic issues, has, you know, insufficient parking, whatever the, the livability is. You know, we own these things long-term, the value of apartments and, and really frankly, all commercial real estate is in the, is in the residents or the tenants that they have, you know, our Yelp reviews matter, our, our Google reviews matter. And so these are things that, you know, we take seriously, we have weekly design meetings, we have all the, the engineers and the experts in the room, and we kind of push and pull on these things just to make sure that, that we're comfortable as, as the property owner when we, when we move forward with, with these communities. So for this one in particular, you know, I'll just start with kind of the ingress and egress into the community. And so the main entrance is off of Jefferson, you know, and frankly, that's primarily by just the, the shape of the, of the parcel that, that we own. So having something, you know, effectively mid-block on Jefferson, terminating at a central amenity point, is really what kind of drives the, the best experience for the residents versus having something kind of tucked into one corner or another. We have a prototype for this that we've built elsewhere, and having that sort of main grand entrance, central amenity, and then the residential kind of flanking on, on either side with a secondary ingress and egress, that's just a, a ride-in, ride-out is, is, you know, what we're comfortable with. And that's something that, you know, we've challenged our, our consultants and said, you know, same questions, well, what if someone wants to go northbound? What if someone wants to go southbound? How is this really going to live at the end of the day? Because if there's a fatal flaw in the design, you know, we're the ones that ultimately have to hold the bag and, and live with it. And so what you see here, and, you know, part of the, the site constraint candidly, is the, the open space. And so, you know, our general business plan is to, I don't want to say go down the fairway, but, you know, have a speed to market to provide the regional housing needs of any cities that, that we do business in. And so obviously, we don't want to come in, build a, a larger community that destroys the open space. And so we said, you know, from day one, this is really, again, about impact avoidance, that's the mantra. So let's make sure we're meeting all of the applicable design standards. You won't see any variances or conditional uses or, or any other exceptions to code. And let's make sure we avoid any known mapped habitat. So we've set aside this, this triangle swath of open space that when you're trying to meet a 30 dwelling unit per acre minimum, not maximum, it, it does create some site constraints. And so, you know, we have communicated in the past with the, the JPI team, actually, one of my, my good friends, we used to work together at another development shop, also works over there. And, and the reason we aren't aligned with them is, is, I'd say kind of tongue-in-cheek is the reason they didn't align with us despite us submitting our application first. And, and really, it just has to do with individual site planning design. So a ride-in, ride-out, you know, from, from our perspective, is kind of a secondary along Marietta Hot Springs. Didn't warrant a traffic signal, it didn't really warrant sort of a grand entrance, and, you know, frankly, didn't, didn't warrant, you know, pedestrian gate or vehi-, sorry, vehicular gates. And similarly, talking with my, you know, friend or former colleague across, across the street, the ra-, the reason they chose not to align with us or to kind of align with, you know, almost the, the wash area to, to the north is how their buildings laid out, and again, they had, you know, close to 900 apartment homes. And so that obviously is a different traffic analysis that they're running, and that was sort of their main entrance to the community. So there were some differences in, you know, site planning, you know, I, I agree as a former planner. You know, it would look nicer if, if they were aligned. I think in reality, you know, we've built communities that have a similar stagger to this, and if there were two intersections that were fully signalized, that obviously would create queuing problems, given the way it's designed here is a ride-in, ride-out. I did like the, the idea of having a pork chop kind of added into the middle of the street just to sort of prevent people from doing what they're not supposed to. But keeping that alignment that, that we have proposed here is, is really critical just to maintaining that the plan is as you see it. One thing that we, you know, like, obviously, Lennar's invested in City of Marietta in the past. This is our first deal as, as Cortera, but really what gave us confidence in the city is there's very clearly defined general plan objectives, very clear, you know, black and white development standards. And so doing something that candidly, we, we don't do often, if at all in my career. We purchased this property last year ahead of the site plan review. Can't disclose the number, but it, you know, many multiple millions of dollars that we purchased just with the confidence that we could build what, you know, we see in the city's vision, implement the city's vision. And then, you know, that also gave us the confidence, you know, understanding that the critical path of delivering housing here is going to be the traffic or the transmission line relocations, just point-blank period. And so we spent several million in, in construction and engineering drawings, so not just advancing our building plans to get into plan check as quickly as possible, but also grading plans, public improvement plans. We have a dry utility consultant that's a former SCE employee that knows the process. And so, you know, assuming we get approval to move forward here, that's basically our, our, our day-one task is to, to start that process. And again, going back to long-term property owner, you know, our goal on these communities is always to just have all of the street frontage offsites completed. We don't want to have a community, you know, 50% leased with residents living on site when we have to relocate poles to do major infrastructure improvements in the city, it just doesn't benefit us. It's frankly hurts us, it hurts rent, it hurts reputation. And, and again, we're not just building these to flip, we build these to, to own long-term. We can click over to the next slide. So in terms of our amenity space, we are planning to phase this in. It is one project in the sense that once construction starts, it won't stop until we're finished. But the way we typically build out these communities is, well, we're starting the middle, so the main entry off Jefferson, the buildings that flank it, and then really this terminus point with our leasing and club building. It's a double-height volume. We added the extra floor because we decided we needed the extra amenity space. So it has co-working, it's probably a most successful amenity that we've had with work-from-home and telecommuting. So that's something that we program in here. The typical clubhouse that can be reserved for resident parties, the pool and spa that was highlighted on earlier. And then one thing that we've called out is a view lawn here, I think. In practicality, whether we do it as the developer or our property manager does it, that really wants to be a totlot in hindsight. We have a dog park already on-site, but the comment about children and having a place to play and that's sort of age-appropriate, I think, is spot-on. So that's something that, it's a good comment, it's one that we should probably have noted in our plans frankly. But that is what that open space would ultimately be used for. In terms of the overall project phasing timeline, from the time we put a shovel in the ground, which, given that we've advanced all of our construction drawings to the point where they're ready for plan check, we would be able to start later this year, ideally second quarter. But I'm a developer, so I'd like to start as soon as possible. The reality is, is probably an early third-quarter construction start. These communities take about a little over a year for that first phase to open with a couple residential buildings, the host of amenities. And then we phase these in, so they always meet the parking by phase. And so we don't end up with any parking issues. Parking's always assigned by our property manager and pretty strictly enforced. And then overall duration of this is we've sort of built out the community is about two and a half years from start to finish. And so that would be the general design and timeline. And so like I mentioned, we've had the confidence to spend, including our land purchase and what we've spent in design and engineering, between $18 and $20 million, pre-planning commission hearing, which in a lot of cities, you just don't do. But in City of Marietta, given Lennar's track record, and again, given the pretty clear objectives and standards that are set forth in the general plan, it's something that we felt confident doing. And this is a market that we want to be in for reasons that I'm sure everyone's aware. So I'm not going to shine everyone's shoes and mention the school districts and the quality of life. But this is one that we've wanted to be in. And so that's kind of our commitment to the city. You can go to the next slide over. So just included, again, we can probably skip over these pretty quickly. No one cares about the interior amenities. We're going to talk about traffic and access. But it's A-class, high-quality design. It's, like I've mentioned, just introducing who Cortera is. I mean, this is the stuff we do every day. Very comfortable with our construction team, very comfortable with our property management team. And yeah, I think we're really just excited to be here, understand the mood with concerns, legitimate concerns on traffic. I mean, I share the sentiment. I live in a condo community that has an apartment building that's going through entitlements, getting built down the street. And it's the same issues and concerns as we try to balance housing needs and just the reality of what that brings. What I will say is, our goals here was, and you can see from the site plan, is to really build out to the final general plan build-out condition. So sort of irrespective of what's our specific project impacts and what's the bare minimum we can do in terms of street widenings and dedications, we just overlaid the city's general plan and said, well, let's set this aside. So that's why you see some of the striping. It's for a future lane that we'll pave that's not going to be there until Marietta Hot Springs gets widened down the road. But all of that, prior to even putting a shovel in the ground, will be dedicated with easements, irrevocable, so that effectively the city's general plan can move forward. And that's basically our sequence of events to getting a shovel in the ground. That was really the main items that I think I wanted to touch on. I had taken some notes on some of the comments and concerns that were brought up. Apologies if I missed any. But I'll just conclude my presentation there and leave the rest of the time for any comments and questions. Our traffic engineer and the rest of our design team and experts are with us. If I can't provide the layperson's development answer, we'll definitely bring in someone that's the subject matter expert. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it very much. At this point, we'd like to have the commissioners, if they have any questions for the development person. And I'll start with Commissioner Wochek.
Dan, thank you for that. And the project itself is a beautiful project, and your amenities, those rooms, I don't know if those are the actual rooms you're planning on, but they look like a hotel kind of, so very beautiful. But you hit on it. The main issue is the ingress-egress with Marietta Hot Springs Road and it being a right-turn-only coming out of the project. You know, in order to go northbound, I'm sorry, southbound on Jefferson, I'm going to have to flip a U-turn at Marietta Hot Springs and presumably, I guess, Madison. Maybe at the new light where that's going, but either way, I have to flip a U-turn. And so if that was a controlled intersection where they can make a left-hand turn, I mean, wouldn't you agree that it's probably safer to do it that way than U-turns?
If the project across the street moves forward, which we're kind of playing guessing games, but if that moved forward with a traffic signal, I'm not sure I'd be comfortable with residents crossing that many lanes to get in a left-turn lane to switch. Our kind of design philosophy initially was that if you need to go southbound, you'd be taking a right turn on Marietta Hot Springs down to Madison and then going basically the long way around. If you're either getting on the freeway to go to jobs, we looked at our traffic studies and kind of where's our resident likely going to work? And that was kind of the main traffic flow was really going up Marietta Hot Springs to get on a freeway. But if they were heading south towards Temecula, then they would be taking Madison was kind of our intent with the design. That's why I mentioned, if we were to provide some sort of, and I'll use a layperson term, blockade or pork chop to prevent people crossing that many lanes of traffic to try and squeeze in, again, assuming the neighboring community moves forward, that would feel safer to me. But again, that's just as the layperson, not as the expert. As we've designed it, our traffic engineers have said that this works from a flow analysis. And again, we meet the right distances between our intersection and the potential future signalized intersection. And so that's what gives me comfort that we have an appropriate design from a flow of traffic ingress and egress.
And I'll profess too, I'm not an expert when it comes to traffic. I just think that going out, making a left-hand turn at a controlled intersection is probably much safer than having to flip a U-turn on the corner of Madison and Marietta Hot Springs Road, because you've got cars that are going to be turning westbound onto Marietta Hot Springs Road from Madison. And if the cars are making U-turns there, that could create some problems at that particular intersection. That's just been my practical experience, what I've seen. And so to minimize that, I think it would be better. And so I didn't quite follow the logic, though. I understand JPI is not, they haven't started developing yet. However, their project does require that traffic signal to go in. If it's not them, probably whoever's going in in the future, there'll be probably a similar requirement. So I think that traffic signal is going to go in regardless. I didn't quite follow you, why you don't want to align with that.
Sure. So I mean, probably the simplest answer is from a speed-to-market and providing what we know is a regional housing needs that would take a pretty significant redesign. Like we mentioned, the long lead time is going to be the transmission pole relocations. And so basically, changing our alignment to align with a project that frankly came after we submitted would basically put us back to square one and delay this and potentially, I mean, candidly, delay the financial viability of the project. Where right now, we have funding as indicated by our purchase of the property, and we're ready to go. Where if it's kind of go back to the drawing board and redesign to align, and I use this term delicately, but arbitrarily with a neighboring development who chose not to align with us for various reasons, I don't think there's a, the reason or the benefit from kind of redesigning one or both projects to align with each other, I think, is probably outweighed by the benefit of one or both projects, not to speak for the neighbor, providing the housing to the area. And so I think, following the traffic requirements and sort of following the regulations that are in place, what's been designed works. And we have...
It works, but isn't it safer?
I don't think it's less safe. I would say it's equally safe from a just traffic standpoint.
That's where we're going to disagree. So as I sit here as a commissioner, I have to look at the, what's safe for our community? We don't want to create traffic conditions that create unsafe conditions. And so from what I'm hearing from you, you're saying, well, if we do that, it's going to slow down the project versus creating a safer community. Do you understand my dilemma?
I understand. I would argue that it's equally safe just from a, that's why we have experts in code requirements, and it's to design safe communities. And so I would say that what we've designed isn't unsafe by any objective measure.
No, but I heard from our, I heard from our traffic department, they said, yeah, it would be safer. So, okay. So let me move on to the park real quick. According to the report, we're going to have 200 to 700 kids there that are in school. That doesn't include those that are in preschool ages, so that number could even be higher. Why no park on the project?
If you could go back one slide to the, zoomed in, or, sorry, one more.
Even a totlot?
Yeah, so that'll be my bad on my part. What we called here is our landscape architect got a little fancy with what's called a view lawn. Practically speaking, that's a totlot. We have a dog park that was called out elsewhere in the community, but that's where we would design an age-appropriate children's area with furniture and play equipment. It's what we've done on our other communities similar to this. So I'd be happy to have the project conditioned to include a totlot. That's not a problem. When you mentioned it, I went, well, we are doing one. And then I saw the image, I'm like, okay, we didn't take credit for what we were planning.
Fair enough.
But that's what we would be putting there. That's...
Fair enough. And then is that the, that's the wetlands that's adjacent to it, right?
Yeah, that's the delineation there.
To the east of that? Okay.
So that'll be fenced off. That will not be the totlot.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. No other questions.
Commissioners, before we move on, Engineering wanted to introduce an update on the pork chop request in Ricolzaga, if we could speak to that point there.
Yes, thank you, Jared. So I just want to clarify, I know earlier the mention of the pork chop. So we've had projects introduce pork chops, and I just double-checked, we don't have pork chops anywhere in the city in the public right-of-way. If allowed, it usually occurs on private property. In this case, as you guys saw, because of the striping, the interim striping, their driveway is recessed substantially back from the actual drive lane. So a pork chop on their property wouldn't really be effective. Not only that, as shown the striping in its interim condition, if somebody were to get in that left lane, there is not enough width to physically make the U-turn. Three-point turn, sure, but by standard design, you cannot execute that U-turn in one swoop. So it would be a no-U-turn light, they would have to go to Madison to do the U-turn.
Thank you. I assume that was the case, but I...
Right.
Which may be worse, because that intersection's going to be busier than where that light's going to go.
So that may be the case, but also to clarify on U-turns, going westbound Hot Springs when you hit Jefferson, currently, it's a dual-left. Also no U-turn in today's situation, because it's a protected right turn as you're going northbound Jefferson onto Hot Springs, which would remain in that condition. So again, you get no U-turn on Jefferson to come back and go into that second driveway, you pray do the U-turn, or the left turn to into the left pocket off of Jefferson to enter the site. So I just want to be clear on the actual overall movements.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned in your presentation that you purchased this property last year.
Yes.
Did I understand that correctly? When did you purchase the property last year?
Gosh, I'd have to look at our title. I think it was in February, it was early last year.
When did you start having conversations with the city?
December 2021? Oh, no, sorry, December 2020. And Jared, correct me if I misspeak here, I'm going off of my memory. And then our formal application was submitted, I believe, in March of 2021. First comments back from the city, I believe, in June or September of 2021. And so then we'd, so we'd gone through several cycles of review before we had made the decision that we're comfortable moving forward with this as an investment in the city.
Okay, so let me just see if I can understand this correctly. So you started having preliminary conversations with the city before you actually purchased the property?
Yes.
If I understand you. Okay, so when did the city ask you to start having conversations with, is it JPI, the property across the street?
Be in their first or second review of cycle comments.
Did you reach out to JPI?
Yes.
You personally called them?
Yes.
Okay. And what was the response back?
I mean, this is airing a little bit of, I'll be careful how I speak. The folks that were originally starting on the project, the company had subsequently let go, we had struggles reaching out to coordinate. Thankfully, we do share, not this project civil engineer, but their civil engineer is a large civil that we use on other projects throughout Southern California, so we were able to find the new folks that worked there, have conversations, and see, their initial drive alignment was in the wetland jurisdiction, if you kind of carried it across the street. And they brought it down slightly, it still obviously didn't line up. And then their project basically was brought forward through planning commission. And we collectively both looked at it and just, the way their community's designed, building dimensions, fire access, turn lanes, the way our community designed with similar constraints, building dimensions, meeting site density, all the setback, all the different pieces, bits and pieces, fire access, turning radiuses, it really didn't lend itself to having a perfect alignment. And just from a planning standpoint, I attribute part of that to the size and scale of their community relative to ours, and then also trying to maintain and protect the wetland jurisdiction.
So I guess my question, so when did you, do you remember when it was that you reached out to them? Just an approximate date. I'm just trying to get this under grasp, under control, to see if you're actually working with them or with the city. I'm just trying to get that basic understanding.
No, fair question. So within, I think, I would say a week or two, I'd have to go back to emails, but within a week or two of getting the comment from staff...
What month, date, year was that?
Oh, that would be in 2021, probably mid to late 2021.
So where I'm going with this is roughly, I was looking on my, when this, the project across the street and where we as a commission voted on it, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was July 26th of last year, is when it looks like we voted on the project, placement of the signal. And I recall maybe some of the discussion where the placement of the signal was far enough away from the intersection of Jefferson and Marietta Hot Springs. Is that a, I'm guessing that's a staff question, maybe you can clean this up later, because I'm with the applicant. But I believe it had to do with a certain distance away. So that's where the placement of that signaled intersection was, was based upon Marietta Hot Springs and Jefferson. We can follow that up later. So that was on the books basically for some time during 2023. And you purchased the property in early 2023, roughly about the same time that they were bringing this through to planning commission. See what I'm trying to understand the timeframe?
Yeah, so we would have purchased before they brought it to planning commission, but we were aware of their development plans that were in process for the city at the time of purchase.
So they were moving forward with the signal location prior to you buying... prior to you buying the property, even though you're having preliminary discussions. So after you buy, buy the property, now you, now you have it. Did you take a relook at this and saying, hey, look, this is already going to planning commission? The, the city's already kind of decided on the placement of that intersection. Why didn't you relook at where your site driveway was, taking the suggestion of the city staff and the safety of the community to consider relocating your driveway on Marietta Hot Springs road to align with something that had pretty much been predetermined at about the time that you were actually buying the property?
Sure. So we, we did look at it several times in several different ways. One, before it was even at planning commission, when it was still a preliminary, you know, site application and line work was moving around, you know, we looked at line work and that's when we identified, you know, well, as initially proposed, it didn't work. And then there were some changes and what can we make this work? And you know, where we ended at the end of the day is it, it doesn't really work with our site in terms of just how it terminates into the site. And then from a, an access standpoint, because we're, I'll say a sort of a long rectangular shaped parcel, it really makes a lot of sense to have the amenities centralized. So the main access is sort of mid-block on, on Jefferson. And that sort of lends a Marietta Hot Springs just being a simple ride-in, ride-out, which candidly, from our perspective and our analysis, doesn't warrant a traffic signal. That's sort of like the, the back of house, the people, if they're just leaving their homes for work, they'll pull up Marietta Hot Springs, go to work. But kind of the main sensor arrival, the main focal point of the community is sort of centralized around that amenity space and having that mid-block connection on, on Jefferson is what made the most sense for us. And so we looked to see where's the final alignment. And this is after we purchased the property. Where's the final alignment going to be? Let's make sure that we're meeting the appropriate distances and setbacks, and we have all the right turning radiuses and there's an interim condition. Let's make sure the interim condition gets coordinated. What's the final condition, you know, with JPI, without JPI, so that we're meeting all the applicable standards. And that's where we settled on, you know, what we have designed here works. There's a few different, I would say, options or iterations within the right of way. If you sort of take both of our alignments and say, well, let's say their project gets stalled out for financing or whatever purpose. Let's say it moves forward after ours. Let's say ours moves forward first or after theirs. And so depending kind of the, the sequence of events, there's a few different interim striping conditions that, you know, will be coordinated with, with public works. But the ultimate alignment and the ultimate build out, we feel is safe, meets all, you know, applicable development standards and is something that we're comfortable with, again, as a long-term owner operator.
I appreciate your long answer to what I was trying to look for a simple question or simple answer, but you said you're, the sense of what you guys have versus kind of the common sense, right? And really ultimately kind of the right thing to do is, and, and I appreciate you're trying to say that you guys were here first, and so they probably, JPI probably should have maybe acquiesced to what you wanted. But ultimately, they moved their project forward first. It got approved first. And then you, you came in and purchased the property about the time that this was maybe a few months before. Their, their project actually went through the planning commission. So they, they kind of solidified their project long before you did at, at the time. So I think the coordination part of it is, is really kind of, I think, kind of a long-term relationship. You pride yourself on, on the company with, with the city here. Really, the right thing to do is, hey, the city's already decided that, that here's the intersection. This is what it's going to be. Why can't we align for that for practicality purposes? So I'll just say this, you know, with the pork chop, it was never my intention to bring up the pork chop. I think that's something that you brought up. I brought up the acceleration lane would be a way because I don't, I agree, it shouldn't be something that goes into the cities right away. It really should be something, in my opinion, that is in, on, on what is your property. If we can't align for traffic reasons, I know I just kind of threw this on that idea and thought out here. I don't necessarily know if this is the, the time and place to, to warrant a decision on that, or if there's some other exploration by some other, you know, delaying the project and, and, and further discussions with the applicant, if that would be fruitful or even, you know, allowable. I just look at that as just as a, other options as far as, you know, the traffic side of it. I think all the other stuff, there's nice things that would be nice to have. But at the end of the day, five years from now, 10 years from now, is someone's going to drive by, a lot of people are going to drive by and go, why did the city approve this and allow this? What a poor design. And they're going to come back to today and wonder, hey, look, were we forced into something because the developer wasn't willing to basically, you know, play with the city and, and the residents and, and develop something out of common sense versus, you know, what made practical sense at the time before, maybe even you bought the property and after, you know, the city had already adopted the prior project and the placement of that intersection. So that's the long answer. So would you reconsider the placement of your, of that driveway there to align with what the, what the city has currently adopted?
And, you know, candidly, I'll, I'll give you the short answer, which is, you know, we, we would like to move forward with the project as designed this evening. The slightly longer, more verbose answer is, you know, we looked at this pretty extensively and it, it's really not feasible on, on the project. And again, relying on my experts and engineers, it's, it's not warranted. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm kind of a layperson on most things, civil engineering, traffic, architecture, et cetera. So I, I kind of have to rely on, on the expertise of, of the team, whether it's a structural engineer to make sure the building stands up, whether it's our landscape architect to make sure we're drought tolerant, you know, whatever it may be. So I'd, I'd respectfully, you know, say that, you know, what we've presented, we're, we're comfortable with and, and that's what we would like to move forward with this evening.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Harlan?
Just an observation from the pictures and appreciate the, the presentation, but we got a pool. You got furniture, shade, cabanas, fitness center, a spa, fireplace, a clubhouse, a game room, a tot lot, dog park, fireplaces, barbecues?
We do have a couple of barbecues, yeah.
That's a lot of, a lot of reasons to stay on site when you're, you're not commuting or working. You got a lot of a lot of options here to stay in and enjoy the property. Well done.
Thank you.
I don't have any further questions. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to move on to public testimony. The time being 7:55 PM. Madam Secretary, do we have any public comments, starting with the proponents, then opponents, and then those that are neutral in that order?
Yes, we have one for neutral. That's Sherri Pence.
Okay. If you could step to the podium and state your name and address, it would be appreciated.
Sherri Pence, 41815 Octavia Court, Marietta, 92562.
Thank you.
I can appreciate the plan. I have no issue with the design of the buildings. The exterior leaves a little too desire for our community. The architectural design is a little less than I would expect. I do want to say thank you to everyone sitting in front of me who is really taking our community in its best interest. I really appreciate everything that I've heard. I just wanted to step forward and really voice some concern that I have based on our community. The egress is something that is a huge concern for me, for our community, our families, our kids that are driving through that intersection. I can say that our city has done a wonderful thing in adding that right-hand turn lane. Before that turn lane, we had a lot of problems, a lot of traffic issues. And that right turn lane was literally like a godsend. So seeing that turn lane, even though doubled, but shortened, is still a concern for me. The entrance and exit on Marietta Hot Springs is a concern. I can definitely see if we don't have a signal light at that entrance, people will cut across to make that U-turn, legal or not. There's a huge need for people to go down Jefferson towards Temecula. And so that, it goes without saying, you might as well park a police car right there. Beyond that, the entrance and exit on Jefferson, how many feet from our, from our intersection is that first entrance, their main entrance? That is a left turn lane and it looks from the, from the planning, it looks pretty close to the intersection. So that is also a huge concern. I mean, we needed that right-hand turn lane for a reason. And to put a left turn lane right at the beginning of where that right turn lane is, how many T-bones are we going to have? I mean, even the little business district, just a little bit down on the right-hand side, there's, there's some pretty close calls there. And they're a good distance from the intersection.
Five seconds.
Five seconds. So I would say, can we look at that? Can we look at that entrance and exit as well as the one on Marietta Hot Springs? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other public comments?
Seeing none.
None? I will close public comment, or I will give the developer any rebuttal that is necessary? You would have, you would have a 10-minute rebuttal if you request it?
Good evening, Chair Fisher, Vice Chair Harlan, Commissioners. My name is Jason Melcher with Kimley Horn. I'm the traffic consultant for the applicant. I bring 25 years of traffic engineering experience, planning, traffic safety. Just wanted to answer a few questions on some of the concerns the commission had on, on traffic. And so I'll start with Commissioner Wojcik. You had mentioned the dual right turn storage length going down from 285 down to 218. We took a pretty extensive look and the, the queuing that we're anticipating there is about 185 feet. So the 218 is plenty to accommodate the cumulative projects with the project when the project opens. So we're anticipating that 185 feet of queuing. So there's still room to store a few more vehicles with that once the dual left turn pocket or dual right turn pockets are in. And the concern of people heading southbound on Jefferson, we went through the trip generator, trip distribution with staff. And so we're only anticipating about 10% of the project traffic needing to go southbound on Jefferson. And so that equates to 12 vehicles in the AM and seven in the PM. It's really a small number. And so the majority of the traffic we're anticipating is heading towards the freeway and up towards Madison. And conversely, you know, our project is 387 units compared to the JPI one that has 850. And so they need the traffic signal because they have the majority of their traffic turning left out of their project going towards the freeway. Where ours just needs the ride out. And so looking at the two access points, one on Jefferson and one on Marietta Hot Springs, and we can satisfy the project ingress and egress from those two access points. Commissioner Vrumen, you had a concern with the access on Marietta Hot Springs. I like the pork chop idea. It's one where, oh, it wasn't, all right. Well, knowing that the, the U-turn would not be allowed at that signal, again, just I too would be afraid of having someone come across, cut all the way across and try to get that where that's located. I know your idea of the acceleration lane before the, before the road narrows before the, the crossing. We just don't have enough room to merge the traffic back in. If we channelized them out of that right turn and then merge them before it narrows down, it's just a, which is why the striping or now the, the berm kind of takes you right up to that lane and you could turn right into that number two through lane. If we came into its own lane, it would, we just don't have enough room to merge back down to that narrow section. Chair Fisher, you had a concern with the southbound left turn into the Jefferson driveway. Same thing with our, our queuing there. We can accommodate the queue that's anticipated going into the project out of that, out of that lane. And so it's one where I know there's a concern with the traffic coming northbound on Jefferson. With the location of the signal, gaps will be created and I don't have any concern with vehicles accessing the main entrance off of that left turn and, and on Jefferson. Again, the northbound right turn, I mentioned the queue with the 218 feet of, of a pocket with a dual right turn. Our project only adds about two cars of vehicle storage to that queue, to the cumulative queue in general. So again, that's a very small amount that this project is adding to in the peak hour for that movement alone. You were, there was a concern with the traffic. Chair Fisher, you had the, the one year of, is that typical, that's a typical timeframe, you know, one year is where we counts when we're collected. Anything within one year is acceptable. And then we also apply a growth percentage to the opening year. So you had some concern with, do we account for some of the traffic that was associated with cumulative projects or what's happened on between now and then? We do apply that 2% growth rate to help accommodate or at least account for that in the study. Just want to make sure I'm going through my notes here. I believe those were all the concerns I noted. But if there's any other questions, be happy to take them.
This is a rebuttal that you have. No questions at this time from the staff. They've already had their questions asked.
All righty.
Thank you very much for your rebuttal.
You got it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
I am now going to close.
Yeah.
Oh, you still have more time?
Sorry, just a different.
Come on.
Still the applicant, yeah.
It was 4:50.
I don't know where we were.
4:50, I think, was left or 4:22. Four minutes and 22 seconds.
Excellent. Good evening, Commissioners. Chris Burt, Cox, Castle, and Nicholson. I'm a land use attorney. I represent the applicant. You know, I know you've heard this from your city attorney already about the, you know, the Housing Accountability Act and what it means with respect to cities and their discretion for projects. I, I, you know, I'm not going to repeat what he said. Obviously, he said it a few times. And there's that nice flow chart in the staff report and was shown before. There was one little nuance I wanted to clarify that, you know, to the extent that not just denying a project is grounds for a violation of the Housing Accountability Act, but imposing a condition that would result in the project being constructed with less units is also a violation of the Housing Accountability Act without making the required findings of, you know, that are specified there. You know, the realignment of the road, the driveway would ultimately require a redesign of the project holistically, right? Including the length of drive aisles that have been designed to accommodate traffic within the project site itself. But it would also require, it would ultimately lose units based upon the project design, which again is consistent with objective standards. And I, I wanted to highlight also just the idea that, you know, this, the JPI project had, you know, was approved before this one. That is true. This project was submitted earlier, which I think was a relevant point because, you know, know, the, the process to design these projects for development is not, you know, obviously it's a long term. This project was submitted, I think, in, at the earliest, early 2021, and is just now coming to the planning commission nearly three years later. You know, at one point, I believe JPI's project driveway was actually located even further east of where it is now, right? And at one point in time, then JPI relocated it. So, you know, it's not that JPI's driveway location has been static since its inception, when it was first proposed. It itself has changed locations, right? And so as our project is moving through the project pipeline and being proposed, it's difficult to, you know, try and realign driveways with a different project across the way that isn't approved and also has an amorphous design unto itself. So, you know, it's just, and again, you know, the design of the project as proposed here is consistent with all objective standards and, as demonstrated by substantial evidence, you know, wouldn't have traffic impacts, there wouldn't be safety impacts and things like that, as you just heard from the traffic engineer. So just wanted to reiterate that. I thank you guys very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other rebuttal? Then I am going to close the public testimony, and we'll discuss the matters amongst the Commissioners at 8:12 PM. All right. As we all know, that the public housing is really a major issue for us. According to our staff, we are in compliance with all of the required and necessary elements of this project. So unless there is a specific request for denial or anything that you think would change this project and not affect a violation of the housing authority, I'm open.
If I can tag on to that, you know, it's, I share and appreciate the residents' comments and feedback that we had, and I think we can all empathize with that, especially relative to traffic, right? And these new residences that are coming in, you know, that's gonna be attractive for business to hopefully get, you know, some additional things here to help reduce some of those San Diego Corona commutes that are out there. That said, I think Jarrett and Counsel, you know, talked us about the state law guidelines. And, you know, as it relative to the, the general plan zoning and SEQA, I think Staff, Aaron, and team there, you know, they made the case. This project meets the deliverables that we have in this, within the scope of our role. I agree with you, Chair.
Any, any further comments?
I, I, I still have significant concerns on the, on the traffic issues. I don't think it's safe. It's my opinion, but there's safer ways of doing this. One thing we didn't really bring up is the fact that the right turn only onto Jefferson from the main entrance, if those people want to go southbound on Jefferson, they're gonna have to cross two or three lanes of traffic in order to make that U-turn. And, you know, I live this road almost every day. I commute from here to Temecula on Jefferson because we all know what the 15 freeway's like. And when I come home at night, Jefferson and Marietta Hot Springs Road are backed up a number of car lanes. And if I'm a resident there, and I'm gonna try to get onto Jefferson, I'm gonna have to fight through that traffic jam to try to cross those lanes. And I, I agree with Commissioner Vrooman that if I'm on the Marietta Hot Springs exit, I just know how people are. They're gonna cheat, and they're gonna try to cross all those lanes and do what they can to get back around so they can get onto Jefferson. So I, I have significant concerns. That traffic light for JPI was, was required by staff, right, for, for their project because of those concerns. And then we have one right across the street, and all of a sudden, what? We say, oh, they don't have to abide by that traffic light? Obviously, there were safety concerns, traffic concerns, and we throw another project, and all of a sudden, oh, you don't have to use that light. I, I just, I find it kind of hypocritical, actually. So I, I have significant reservations. I think it's a highly significant safety traffic issue. And what I heard tonight, to me, doesn't alleviate my concerns. That's the problem I got.
I just think that, that we have to look at this project as a solo project and not think about the JPI. We're here talking about this particular project, whatever JPI might do or might not do, and yes, we voted that at, at some point in time, is another subject matter. But I think we have to look at this project and whether this project meets all the requirements of the state in its entirety. And from Jarrett's point of view, on our planning department, it does meet those minimum requirements. So there is nothing that would see for me to be able to deny the project unless I'm mistaken and, and there's other comments.
I, I just had, just a follow-up to the thought of the acceleration lane. I know their attorney got up and spoke, and I just wanted to give Traffic Engineering a final word on that.
So from an acceleration standpoint, I think what the traffic, their traffic engineer said, that they don't have the distance, that, that is true. Because of the choke point at the, at the drainage waterway there. Not to mention, to provide a quote acceleration lane, unquote, those people coming out of the, the project would accelerate, but you also have a crosswalk. So their project is proposing a crosswalk, so when you have a potential pedestrian there and an acceleration there, it creates a conflict. So an acceleration lane really doesn't seem feasible. In my mind's eye, I've tried to think of a layout, and, and I don't see it. Again, because of that crosswalk, that adds to the, to the restriction. And also, I want to throw out, if for whatever reason JPI did not come through, that left turn would not go there. So it would have to be relooked to probably close off that left turn, and they're gonna be directed straight to Madison. Those are details, so when we condition projects, it's difficult to really hit the bullseye and, and, and capture all possibilities in a, a document of the conditions of approval. But if that were to happen and the market did whatever it did tomorrow, we would have to look at some of those things and make some modifications. But back to the point of the acceleration lane, I just don't see how that could be done.
Okay. And, and again, that's just an idea in the spirit of cooperation, but apparently, you know, this is a class, I'll just say, this is a classic letter of the law, spirit of the law type of thing like that. We hear the letter of the law, we're locked in by, by what the state laws are now, which takes discretion and the willingness of, you know, development community to work with staff and try and find a, a better solution that everybody in the city is gonna live with. Instead, sometimes we get stuck with things that, you know, aren't our doing, but they're forced upon us and by either bad concept designs, those type of things like that. And, and here we live by that, heretofore, right? So I think, you know, we've had several projects come, come our way, and where we've go, where we've seen this over the last year or so since I've been on the, on the commission. And, you know, we've, you know, made suggestions where we can in order to, hey, we're not gonna let this happen again. And this is kind of one, one of those same things again. It's, it's, you know, someone brings something forward, and it's like, okay, now we gotta close another loophole if we can because of, you know, unwillingness by someone to, to try and work with others. And it's a sad situation. I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. City Attorney, and I don't know, is one of our options a continuance of this project or not, based upon state law?
It, it certainly is an option. As Staff alluded to earlier, we're limited to five total hearings on this matter, and that includes any subject appeals or continuance thereof, too. So we have, there is a hard cap there that we have to be considered of. If we were to continue it, if that was to be the direction of this commission, I would hope that that would come along with some direction as to why or what, what we hope to accomplish during that continuance period. I'm not sure, you know, where, what you were thinking of, but from a, from a simple standpoint of can it be, can it be continued? Yes.
That was my, that was just my question as an option. I don't know, and I'd have to ask Staff, if there was a contingent, a, a continuance of this project, do we feel that there would be any changes that would take place during the contingency portion of this project?
I think that would depend, Chairman, on the questions or the framework that you want us to come back with. What I heard tonight was there was a number of concerns about the frontage improvements and the circulation. If we were given some specificity or some direction on that one, I think we could look into those things a little bit closer and then bring that back. I don't know if that would change the outcome of the project, per se, but Staff is always here to serve the Planning Commission and make sure that they are apprised of all the facts. And if they are not sitting here collectively feeling that they can make a decision, certainly if you could give us some direction, we'd be more than happy to bring that back at a future hearing.
Thank you. I guess I would now bring it back to the Commissioners to understand, everything that this project has is in relationship to the state laws correct. But I know that there are some concerns by the Commissioners regarding egress and ingress and things of that sort. I don't know if it would make a difference or not for continuance of this project or not. I yield to my fellow Commissioners for their thoughts.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I could interject.
Sir.
Sorry, out in left field.
Mr. David, thank you.
So I, I would say, just to tack on to, you know, what Jarrett had stated, that if there's information that hasn't been made available, or if we need to drill down in substantial detail to identify how the particular turn pocket works, we're happy to do that and, and bring that back. We want to make sure we don't leave any stone unturned for you to be able to make this decision. As you've heard from, from Staff, you know, we believe this complies with all of the objective standards that we could have applied. I can tell you, I was, I sat in some of those meetings with the traffic engineers and the, the applicant, and, and we beat the, beat a dead horse with respect to that, that turn pocket. So, but in order to satisfy the, the commission's own state of mind, we're happy to bring back detailed information about that, because I know we, we didn't necessarily drill down a lot of detail. I think we covered it at a high level for you. So if that's what you'd like us to do, we're, we're happy to, to do that for you.
And again, I'll bring that back to the Commissioners to get their input on whether we should do a continuancy, and if we did, what would be the reason for that continuancy, even though this project has satisfied all the basic requirements of the state legislation?
Well, I, I agree with you, Chair. I think this is a project that needs a standalone, and we're only looking at this one project, right? And I appreciate Commissioner Wojcik of Vrooman on, on the traffic concerns and their insights, especially from, from their background. I think Staff has made this case on, on the project meeting, the deliverables. Just me personally, with everyone that's looked into the traffic so far, David alluded to, has twisted this every which way, I'm not so sure what could come back that would be different. He's kind of where I'm at.
Are you talking about a, a more detailed, David, were you alluding to the fact of more detailed design that we could see of that, of that driveway? Is that what you'd be able to do, or is, is that what you're kind of alluding to?
Well, I, I think, you know, given the analysis that we've done previously, you know, there, there's, there's a lot of, with, with the traffic engineering, you know, requirements, you know, you heard, you know, some of the standards mentioned, the, the queuing lengths, turning movements. And, and so we would, what we could do is bring back a very detailed, focused analysis, showing you the analysis that we had done, and maybe even walk you through some of the alternatives that we considered and couldn't get to, so that, that you satisfied yourselves that, that we've looked at this every which way and weren't able to come up with a better design than what's been provided to you on these project plans.
But it's my, it's my feeling that that driveway is not gonna be moved by the developer, and the developer, you know, needs to get this project going from a financial commitment also that he has to worry about in purchasing the land and the development. So that's another concern. So I would ask now for a motion and a second, if we could have that put up. Anybody want to make a motion?
Do you want to read it? I'll go ahead and make a motion. Would you like me to read it?
Sure.
All right, a recommendation. So it's a consider and approve the notice of determination, adopt a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, and adopt a resolution entitled Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Marietta, adopting a mitigated negative declaration and approving a development plan permit number 2022-2605-2023-00006 for the construction of a 387 multifamily units and associated amenities and improvements located southeast of the intersection of Marietta Hot Springs Road and Jefferson Avenue, APN 910-410-011, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval on Exhibit A as found in the Attachment 1, also to include a RADA to conditional approval number 88.
And I think on the condition of approval, we were talking about a tot lot that would be included in this project.
And we could add, you could add in to amend the, to include the tot lot.
That would be subject to the person making the motion, whether they wanted to include that or not.
Did you want to include that or not?
He was agreeable to it, but you'd have to include that in your motion.
So the motion to include a tot lot.
Do I have a second? I will second it. We have a, an emotion by Vice Chair Harland and a second by Chair Fisher. May I ask Madam Secretary to have a motion? I mean, to have a vote at this point?
Chair Fisher?
Yes?
Vice Chair Harland?
Aye.
Commissioner Vrooman?
Reluctantly, yes.
Commissioner Wojcik?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-1.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Let's move on to the city planner comments. Any comments from the city planner?
Only comment here is the decision here was rendered, so there is a 10-day appeal period, and the application would be submitted in. You could contact me, or you would reach out to the City Clerk's office.
Any city attorney comments?
None, thank you.
And any planning commission comments?
I would just say, overall, here, here's our, here's my concern. I just don't want to give you a perception of, you know, the last year as we see these, these projects. And I think Council's past have put together a very comprehensive general plan and updates and things like that. But, you know, what's changed in the last couple of years, obviously, the shopping habits after COVID, right? So, so we have a lot of these, the red zone there, the community commercial, you know, industrial, all those type of things like that as we built out our city, as the prior councils have put in place a, a general roadmap, and then now intersect that with the state laws and the changes and things like that, and their ability to basically kind of take some of that community commercial. of that community commercial, and now we have more housing. My fear as a resident here, we're seeing a lot of apartments go in, you know, right next to each other, and just a general abundancy, which was never really the plan, you know, 10 years ago. And you look at our, and I've been here 30-plus years, and you look at what the anticipated build-out of the city was, you know, based upon the size and scope and everything like that, and then now you look at, see some of the numbers, and it's based upon some of the multi-housing elements that we're having in the city. And what I can see, or kind of somewhat predict in 10 years, is that, you know, someone's going to say, how did we get here? You know, more road failures, more those type of things like that. And I don't know, as we, just as a general thing, maybe something council needs to look at, or is, do we need to really look at the formula? Because the formula that is in place doesn't really still work in our needs right now. And I think Commissioner Wojciech has brought up some things in the past about maybe changing some of the building standards. I keep bringing up the gates, you know, those type of things like that. Are these things that we could, you know, make changes where we can, you know, for safety as we continue to get more of these? And what I see is, we have the people that are homeowners in the city, and we're going to quite quickly have a much higher rental population in the city. There's nothing wrong with that. But what I don't see coming forward, and what I haven't seen, there's a lot of projects of kind of that midway step of condominiums or townhomes, and being able to transition people, are they going to be renters forever because they, because at some point in time the housing in the city is going to be, you know, 1.5 million bucks for a tract home? Because they're fewer and far between than the apartments, so the people that live in the apartments are going to be ever, forever tied to being renters, and you've got, you know, so many houses. But there's no, there's no ability, or seemingly not, not the ability for people to transition to be a first-time home buyer here with other projects that kind of fit in that multi-home development, such as condos or townhomes or other entities. We're going to have two polar extremes in our community, the way that these projects are keep bringing forward, and it's taken up some of our community commercials, so then at some point in time, are we not going to have much of that? I'm just kind of stating a perception out there, and I don't know what to do with it. I don't have the answer. We've got our professional staff here, you know, in planning, some of the council, do we do, where do we need to kind of look at some of the things where we can, you know, that the state, you know, where we have some discretion? Because I could just see that we're going to be on a, you know, we're blessed in the fact that we're Marietta, you know. A lot of the city to the south of us have, has filled in a lot of their available land space. We have an abundance of it, you know, and comparing the two. And so is this going to continue to happen to where now all of a sudden we're going to be lopsided? And that was never really the intent of the council's past, and certainly not the intent of the current council, and we're stuck. So how do we solve that? I'm just stating a perception out there as I see more and more of these projects, and then we've been caught in the fact of other developers coming forward. The design standards last year was a positive development out of one where we canceled that, you know, voted down that project, and we got a better design out of it, and then ultimately, you know, that changed some of the design standards, and here we go again with, you know, another developer coming forward, a big-name developer coming forward and not being willing to cooperate with our city staff and kind of buoying their way forward. And that concerns me, and it should concern everybody. Just a perception.
Thank you, Commissioner Vroom.
You know, we got the...
Vice Chair Harlan?
We got the email from Tanya notifying us of the meeting here today, and when you opened that up and you looked at all the attachments and the volume and the depth and the specifics, and there's a lot of stuff there. I just think we'd be remiss not to recognize Aaron and staff for all the hard work that you all put in, as well as the applicant, on pulling all that together, because there was, you could tell in reading through that, that you folks really put some time and effort into that, so appreciate you. Thank you.
Commissioner Wojciech, any comments?
Just to echo Craig's comments, it was a pretty thick agenda packet, 2,600 pages, if I recall. So I do want to commend staff, as well as the applicant, for putting all that together. Took a lot of time to read through it all, but I went through it all, and very informative, and just appreciate your efforts.
And I'd like to make a comment, and as I always have, being on this commission for a while, is the work that our planning commission does, the individual planners, the way in which they work with the betterment of the city with a developer to bring in new projects that are sometimes controversial and sometimes not really accepted. However, the state laws today are requiring certain things that we have to abide by. Do we have compassion for our residents of this city? I personally do, yes. I'm a resident of this city. I've been a resident in this city for 12 years, and I understand the feelings that our residents have in different parts of the city. And I just want to make that comment out there and to thank our planning department for all they do. I also specifically want to thank these Commissioners that I'm sitting next to for their questions, their insights, not accepting a yes without getting an explanation, even though it may not be the explanation they want or the vote that they want. I do appreciate them very personally for all the work they put into reading the project reports we get and their questions that they ask of the planning staff, and as well as the developers. And I just want to say thank you very much to my fellow Commissioners for all their hard work. I appreciate it very much. If there's no further business, may I ask for a consensus to adjourn this meeting? I have a consensus. The meeting is adjourned at 8:35. Thank you.